We're just waiting until six thirty, that's why there's a wall can't start before six thirty. I'm gonna start at six thirty if that's all right with you. So there's any sense. I mean, I know how he's not coming, but I thought Isaac was. Sorry. That's great. Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to call to order tonight's regular Tiburon Town Council meeting for Wednesday, December sixth. Madam Clerk, could you call the role, please?
Councilor, Councilmember Nick Hart is absent. Councilmember Fear is absent. Councilmember Warner.
Is here.
Vice Mayor Fredericks.
Here.
And Mayor Ryan.
Here, thanks. So before we get to the regular agenda, we start with oral communications, and that's an opportunity for anybody to speak to the council on any item that is not on tonight's agenda. So we'll start with people in the chambers, and then we'll go online to see if anyone has to speak. You can announce yourself, introduce yourself, and then you'll have three minutes to speak on any subject of like that's not on the agenda. Madam Clerk, do you want to give instructions to the public on that?
You're calling in on Zoom and would like to make a comment during this meeting, please use the raise hand feature of Zoom, which will indicate to me you'd like to make a comment. You can find the raise hand button on your webinar controls bar on the bottom of your Zoom window or smartphone screen. If you're calling and using a phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand.
Thanks. So for anybody in the chambers who'd like to speak to the council, could you please come forward and introduce yourself and then you'll have three minutes.
My name is Mrs. Pamela McConnell Douglas, and this is my husband Steve Douglas. And yeah. So um. I need to deal with some things that's in the past as well as the present. A number of years ago, as well as the presence, a number of American black doctors, lawyers, and etc. Have been stopped and Tiburon Beverly, due to the fact of their skin tone being black. It's not a good subject matter. So um. Also, I'm still dealing with how my son Nicholas Nichols was treated while living at Tiburon Beverly. A number of the police at Tiburon Beverly raised my son when he was three years old. Because he was black. I mean, enough is enough is enough. And um. Nicholas was very voted out at Tiburon Beverly. And into the San Francisco area by a number of police at Tiburon Beverly. A year and a half ago, I got the news that Nicholas was dead, dead in San Francisco for being black. And the one officer involved knocked on my door where my son was only three years old stating that he drew a stratosphere. Three years old, even I don't know what a stratosphere looks like. But his wife officer was determined, determined to make sure that Nicholas was eventually in a bed. And which he did. Most people in Tiburon Beverly, they do not see the color or whatever. But they just live as though racism do not exist here. But it does. And I don't want another black child to end up like my child, thirty seven years old. He was uh spending time in Hawaii, New Zealand, Sweden, and my grandson lived in Sweden. And he would not be able to see my child again. But yeah, they killed him.
I know this is an important topic, but if you could please wrap up.
Pardon me, pardon me.
I know it's a very important topic, but if you could wrap up your comments, we'd appreciate it. You can speak to us afterwards, but.
I get, you know, I get what people to see that this is not a miracle around here.
Thank you for your comments.
This is the racism here.
Hello, I'm Steve Douglas. I just wanted to say thank you, Jack Ryan, for cleaning out the drainage ditch in Hillary, that very nice. Now, if we could just work on the bus stop. Because there's all the eucalyptus trees and the birds, you know, and it's just, it's really a disaster area. And one of the other council members told me they seen Caltrans cleaning the windows with squeegees or something on one of the bus stops. But I'm hoping that we can get through to Caltrans to look at that bus stop because it's very dilapidated long time, you know. And it's been a pain in my wife's side. She's been trying to get that fixed for long. So that's all I want to talk about for now. Thank you, guys. Happy holidays.
Thank you to you too. Thanks for your comments and your persistence on that. Is there anyone else in the chair, Mr. Stevens?
My name is Elena Stevens, and I'm a resident of six eight seven Hawthorne Drive, located in the Hawthorne Undergrounding District. The work to install undergrounding utilities and remove the old wires and poles is finally coming to a close. As of December fifth, the Hawthorne Improvement Fund balance was nine hundred and forty nine thousand dollars. Once the district is declared final, town council will consider a resolution declaring the surplus of improvement funds and authorize the disposition of funds in accordance with the Streets and Highway Code, Sections ten four twenty seven and ten four twenty seven point one. According to this code, town council will have several options for the disposition of surplus funds. I am here tonight to talk to you about the surplus funds for property owners who participated in the bond issuance and the two options that are most relevant to the district. The first one is credit against the assessments without calling bots. Commonly known as a tax holiday. This option relieves property owners from payment of their tat of their assessment for the time period that the surplus exists. Savings for property owners would be achieved in the next few years. The second option is redeem bonds and reduce assessments. This option would reduce the debt principle by reducing the bonds. The reduction would be seen over the life of the assessment with reduced payment amounts. Savings for property owners will be spread out over the remaining life of the bonds, possibly twenty to twenty five years. In two thousand and fourteen, the town of Tiburon conducted a survey to ask property owners in the Delmar Undergrounding District, which of these two refund options I just described, they would prefer. The survey responses were included in the staff report recommendation in the passing of the Delmar Resolution on June eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen. I ask you today to please conduct a similar survey of the property owners of the Hawthorne Undergrounding District to ask which of the two options for disposition of our surplus funds we prefer.
Thanks for your comments. Please, Mr. Curry.
Hello. Oh, I'm Mike Gaffari. I wanted to talk to you today. Okay. I'm Mike Gaffari. I wanted to talk to you today about the issue of a crosswalk on Tiburon Boulevard at Gil Martin. So this is an issue that I've thought about ever since I moved to Tiburon. I don't even live in the Gil Martin subdivision. I live on Tiburon Boulevard. But that means I have a front row seat to kind of see what's going on. And so I've witnessed many near accidents. That, you know, a large actual accident this year, right, that involved a biker getting hit, fire trucks, ambulances, police cars, and lots of near misses of senior citizens trying to cross the street. Adults trying to cross the street, it's, it, you know, can be dicey as well. And then especially children. And so recently, I think since Caltrans has been working on a Route one thirty one improvement project, this issue has kind of come up to the forefront again. And I joined a Caltrans meeting that they had on Zoom to talk about it. And interestingly to me, so I came on just to talk about this a little bit over there. And I was surprised to find that the Gil Martin Crosswalk concern ended up being the most talked about thing at that Caltrans meeting by Tiburon residents. So I think there were eight people who kind of chimed in after I did saying, yeah, this is a big issue. We need to get this fixed. And any other issues people had, maybe one, two, three people would chime in. So I said, wow, okay, this is not just me observing this. This has kind of been on the back burner in my mind for a long time. But I said, hey, I think this is a real issue. So I've then kind of contacted folks from Safe Routes to School, talked to other people, found out who's interested, learned that lots of Gil Martin residents, lots of families are interested. The school district's interested, but the big ask from Caltrans at that meeting, they said, hey, you know, we'd love to work on this, but we need more guidance from the town. Now, it sounds like the town has already tried, you know, working with Caltrans on this, but I think my ass today, I know we're not going to discuss it tonight, but maybe is the council might consider putting us on a future agenda. And also just working with the town manager, the town engineer, I think some of these conversations already going, just really get it on the agenda, have this be a win for safety for the town, pedestrian and bicycle access. And I think it's a good thing for all of us, you know, there's a bus stop there, right? So people who work in our town, whether they live there or not, kids getting off the school bus, they can get off that if they're on that kind of Gil Martin side away from the water. And then they're kind of stranded on island. If they need to get to any other part of town, they have no safe way to cross. And there is a concern about, well, you just paint some white lines and then maybe people cross have a false sense of safety. I will point out that unlike Stewart, that area actually has a lot of visibility. I think it's pretty obvious cards. It's a long straightaway. And of course, you can include the light and some of the stuff they have at Stewart, if that makes it safer. But I even think painted painted white lines would would help. They're better than nothing. That's all. Any help? Much appreciated. Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks for your comments, Mr. Curry. So just really briefly, can you really briefly, can you add something to that?
A number of years ago, I was a policy guy at Miss Ray Boulevard. And I did implement a signal for that we stayed there. So that's why we have a statement here because of my hard work.
Thank you. That's very interesting. That's good historical context. Thank you. Is there anybody else in the chambers who'd like to speak on an item that's not on tonight's agenda? Madam Clerk, do you see anybody online who'd like to speak on items not on the agenda?
Seeing none.
Okay, so I'll close the open comment period and we'll move to the regular agenda, beginning with the consent calendar. Are there any members of the council who'd like to pull an item from the consent calendar? Seeing none, anybody, any members of the public like to make a comment on any of the consent items? I see none in the in the chambers.
Seeing none.
Okay, so with that, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented. Any seconds?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and then opposed, that passes four zero. Thank you. Now we move into the action item section. The first action item tonight is a building permit extension. Or considering a building permit extension for twenty two fifteen Vestasow East. Do we have a staff report tonight?
We do. Let me see, is this working? Yeah, we do. We're just gonna put it on if you give me a moment, just a few slides so you can then context. Okay. For my my manager, Lee. Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. What we have before us tonight is a recommendation to consider a building permit extension and any related fees and penalties for a single family residential project located at twenty two fifteen Vestasow East. Can you move to the next slide, please? So this permit was issued in June thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen. And as you know, the Tiburon Municipal Code provides opportunities for the building official to extend these building permits. The applicant has received three six month extensions and an eighteen month COVID relief extension. The most recent extension is set to expire December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty three. And that's why we're before you tonight because we no longer have the authority through the building official to grant any more extensions. We saw something similar to this a couple of months ago. Next slide, please. So as I said, the building official has granted three extensions. And currently, the application has a number of items, the applicant, excuse me, has a number of items to complete. And it's pretty evident that he will not be able to complete them by December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty three. Some of them are are large, such as finishing a driveway and some drainage issues. The applicant has provided you a schedule as part of the staff report. That was attachment two or exhibit two, showing that he would be able to complete this at the end of April, two thousand and twenty four. And so what we're seeking tonight is that town council consider granting a six month extension to finish the project. And the fee for that extension would be seventy two thousand eight hundred and seventy four. Next slide, please. So in conclusion, as you're receiving my staff report tonight, and I see that the applicant and a representative or the representatives for the project are here tonight. So the council may grant an extension in accordance with the municipal code or modify those terms of the extension if the town council concludes that the modification is warranted. And of course, you could deny their request. And as you know, if you deny the request for the permanent extension, the project would be on hold. There would be no more work. And the applicant would have to go back through the process. And I think at this point, we are all really anxious to get that project completed. And I think the neighbors are as well. So we're trying to reach some some middle road here, at least if we could. And if you have any questions, I'm available to answer them, of course.
Thank you. Do we have any any questions for my fellow council members for staff? Please, Vice Mayor.
So I think I I read an option of reducing the fee at this time. And if we were to decide to do that, is it possible to add a condition that if the project is not full of finished on the next date, that in addition to the fees at that time, the excused difference will be added on just as an incentive? Is that something we can do?
I think the the council has broad latitude on what they'd like to do with that regard. I will point out as Director Tassini mentioned a few minutes ago, you heard an item very similar to this just several months ago. And at that time, I'll just remind council, what you chose to do was to impose the fee as proposed, but directed staff to prorate it. If the project was finished in advance of six months, it would be prorated for the amount of time early that the project was completed. That would be another option.
Yes, thank you. Incentives are always much better than punishments.
Any other questions? So at this time, I'll open it up to the public. Are there any members of the public in the chambers who'd like to speak to this agenda item? If so, you're welcome to come up and just introduce yourself and then you'll have three minutes to speak.
Yeah. My name is Andre Lebov. I'm one of the owners of the property two two one five Vestasow. And yeah, we'll ask you to extend the permit for us. And so out of those three years that were been in the project, we had a lot of roadblocks where we had a lot of issues with utility companies where it took fourteen months to relocate the power pole. We had issues with COVID rain last year. So I mean, overall, at the project, we were maybe eighteen months overall, but other all the other time it was kind of on hold. So yeah, that's pretty much where where soul stands. And yeah, and if there's a way to reduce the fees or as you propose to like incentive, if we're not done within six months, we would need to pay in the backwards. That would be fine. I mean, we understand it. And I feel confident that we're going to be actually finished in six months. That's that's all that's all I have to say.
Okay, no, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public like to speak to this item? Nobody in the chambers, anybody online like to speak?
Seeing none.
Okay, so I'll close public comment period and I'll bring it back to the council for discussion and emotion if we get there.
I'll just say that that I'm comfortable with the same framework of penalties that we had last time prorated.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly don't see any reason to not grant the extension. And I think that the prorating, not only have we set the precedent, but it's also a sensible way to incentivize them. So I agree with you.
Does that leave you with enough instruction in terms of what we're asking you to do?
Yes.
I just want to be clear. It hasn't, there's not a motion yet, but I just want to be clear. What you're suggesting is you'd grant the extension, charge the total fee amount with the understanding that that would be prorated if the project were final prior to the six months.
So now that that's clarified, do I have a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? No? That passes four zero. Thank you. We'll move now to action item two, which is comes to us from the Heritage Arts Commission. Do we have a staff report on this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Just very briefly, I'll introduce this item. But the presentation is actually going to be given by Heritage Arts Commission Chair, I believe. So very quickly, in two thousand and nineteen, the Heritage Arts Commission created a public art program and policy, which your council approved in November, two thousand and nineteen. To date, the program has no permanent source of funding. And despite that, the Heritage Arts Commission has engaged in a couple of very noteworthy projects and has been working over the past months to talk brainstorm or figure out a way to have some more certainty in funding for public art projects. And at their last meeting, and I believe we included a near packet as exhibit one, a letter from the Heritage Arts Commission seeking the town or asking the town to transfer fifty thousand dollars from general fund operating reserves to the existing public art reserve fund. And with that, I will turn it over to the H and A Commission, and I believe Arjun.
Good evening, welcome.
Excuse my voice. I just came from a twenty hour direct flight from Delhi. Wow. I'm a little jet lagged.
I just came from Canada and I was up at two AM Canada time. So I feel what you feel right now.
I'll just reiterate some of the points made in the proposal for the council, if I may. The 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 public art policy that was created in two thousand and nineteen and approved by the town council has some points about funding. And I think the main the main point was with regards to the town's involvement. A percentage for art could be built into town funded capital improvement projects. Now, we realize that that is a considerably complicated task. And in our meetings with Greg Chanis, we felt that rather than make that leap, we would find a a sort of a measure that would move forward incrementally town support for public art in Tiburon. And we felt that the best way forward would be to take some money from the General Reserve Fund, fifty thousand dollars, which we believe should last us for at least a few years. Given that the costs for the projects that we've already undertaken have ranged from, I think, ten to twenty twenty five thousand dollars. And which were also supported by the generosity of the of the town itself. We thought that with this funding from the General Reserve Fund, in the next few years, we would have a kind of a proof of concept about our public art policy and our program. And at that point, you know, we might revisit the idea of a more permanent and regular funding structure from the town. I will not go into the the potential to transform the town and the standard of life. I think we're all aware from the two projects, the Portuguese Dairy mural, which was a heritage project and a permanent public art piece. And the collaborative nature project by Thomas Jackson that lasted for a little over two months this year, which was a temporary public art program. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thanks. Does council have any questions, please?
Yeah, I I I'm just not sure. I mean, it's not clear to me the process by which the money will be spent. Are you thinking that as you generate expenses, you will simply bill the town? Or will you have a bigger concept like what project we are planning and a budget before the money is actually spent?
That's a great question. We go on a project by project basis. And of course, all projects have to be approved by the town council. So we would draw up a proposal and then present that proposal to you and any other bodies, for example, the Parks, Open Space and Trails Commission, or anyone else, maybe the Chamber of Commerce. And then, once we have the approval, we would then allocate a certain amount from that particular reserve fund to get it started. And really, the idea was that, you know, in a given year, there's such a short runway to raise funds. And as we learned with the Thomas Jackson project, I mean, we we managed to do it, but you know, it's a steep learning curve. I mean, clearly, there are issues about credit card payments and how does the town accept money for, you know, certain types of fundraising? And none of us are fundraising professionals on the H and A Commission. Nor do we have the means to hire a development professional either. So the idea is to, you know, for example, we have a project right now that's pending that I believe would be before the council in January. And, you know, it requires a kind of a down payment. Now, that's not a, that's not a you know, money that's spent already, but it's showing a commitment that we want to bring this artist to the town for a performance. And we can't raise that money. You know, right now, we need to ask the town for it, or we would draw it from the public art, you know, fund that we're proposing. Of course, if the if the project doesn't meet the approval of the town, or if it doesn't, you know, for some reason, doesn't go through, then that the artist would then, of course, give the money back. That's part of the idea. It's just a, it's just a sort of secure a placeholder in their calendar. It's as a performance.
So so just clarify. When you come to the council for project approval, you will also come with a proposed budget?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, please, Councilwoman Warner.
So the way I the way I read the staff report, so correct me if I'm wrong, the idea is not to give not to give the council or not to give the Arts Commission the authority to spend the money, but to allocate the money so that it shows the town's commitment. And then when the time comes to spend the money with whatever the entire package is, you come to the council and the council will allocate money. with whatever the entire package is, you come to the council and the council will allocate money from that reserve as we normally would.
Or the budget request.
Right.
Yeah.
And the council could provide more or less whatever it wants to do, but would you know, if if uh, if everything is going the way it should, you know, would do exactly what is being recommended.
I I would hope so.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then I had a follow-up question. So I I understand that this is creating a a commitment, the fifty thousand. Um, did you arrive at that number because you think that is the number that you would want for the year? Um, or how did you come to fifty thousand? I understand that it would show the town's commitment to public art, and then at least you would have a baseline budget to work with. I was just curious whether the fifty thousand was uh based on previous projects?
In part, it was based on previous projects. In part, it's also uh, you know, we envision a number of projects of differing scope. And we don't feel that we're drawing from the fund to um fund the project entirely. But as I said, it gives us some freedom and flexibility uh as we also structure a parallel funding campaign. Um, and we feel that the town council's commitment would also inspire residents and donors as well um, as it has in the past.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Gupta or for staff? So at this time, I'll open up for public comment. Are there any members of the public? Um, tha- thank you very much, by the way. Appreciate the information, the detail. Um, are there any other members of the public who'd like to come and speak? Yeah, you can go back.
Thank you.
Yeah. If anyone else would like to speak, um, please feel free to come up. Um. Is there anyone online who'd like to speak on this item?
Seeing none.
Okay, so I'll close the public comment period and I'll bring it back to council for discussion. Please, Councilwoman here.
Uh, so I just wanted to say um that I love the Heritage and Arts Commission. Um, the work that you guys are doing has been spectacular. Uh, the Portuguese Dairy mural bringing um, who knew, the president of Portugal to Tiburon. Uh, and creating that sense of community that we want all of our uh commissions to help us create here in this town. So I see this as a commitment of the council uh for art and for public art and for everything that you all have brought. So I'm going to support this and um strongly support it. And I just want to take a moment to thank you for all of your work.
Thank you.
I want to make a comment in the same vein. I've been, one of the things I've been continually impressed by uh since being on the council is the great work of the Arts Commission and uh looking forward to what's next. So I'm very supportive of this proposal.
Yeah. And I'll say that I actually really appreciate the ultimate goal of getting a sustainable funding source too. I think that is a great long-term vision and this is a great intermediate step. Um, so if no other comments, I'd appreciate a motion to uh approve the request.
So I'm.
Um, second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor of approving the motion as crafted? Say aye.
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 So that passes five zero. Thank you, guys.
Well, we love you all, so thank you for your work.
So we'll move now to action item three, which, wait, who who put this item on here? What, what the? What? Election of a new mayor? Yeah, this is. Oh.
It's almost offensive.
You're not, you're not thinking of a coup, are you?
No. I'm just gonna steal things, a few things to take home in the morning. But, um, so I I do, I want to say a few things, but I'm gonna keep it brief, though. There's not a huge audience to hear me speak, but um in the last couple of months, I um, I did a couple of things. I I hosted some with Greg, I hosted some scouts here. Um, they were probably around ten years old, and then I actually went to Del Air and spoke to the third grade class there about local government, and it was really cool. You know, one of the things that I that I brought up right away and and tried to underscore was that the mayor doesn't really have any other um privileges or authority. It's more just, it's um, you know, an honor to be serving here. Um, although I will say that that started to lose the audience because that, you know, the aura that they had
Yeah.
put around me. So I pivoted and then I lied and I told them I was all powerful and it was much, it went much better after that. Um, so I realized that tonight, you know, I I can, in that spirit, I can talk about things that sort of we presided over slash we, we advanced. Um, and then if I happen to conflate that and say that I got it done, it's just artistic license in that spirit, but we all know. And you know, and if members of the press misinterpreted and say that it was my doing, that's fine, you know, because because I I will say that while I was mayor, you know, I I I ended the pandemic, right? We were in we were virtual when I became the mayor and then we went back. So that was good. Um, everyone remembers Public Works, you know, having to work diligently last winter um about all the flooding that was in town. Um, but that was because I I ended the drought in California. So check that box. Um, and the third one that I think is most indisputable is that I unified the entire Tiburon Peninsula in their hatred of and disdain for state housing mandates. And I I think and and so what I will say further on that is I really, really appreciate everybody here for all of the work and effort we did on that. Because that was, and we've all said it on the dais many times, it was unpleasant. It was nothing we relished doing. But at the same time, it was very important that we not sort of abrogate our responsibility there and we do it incredibly diligently and meticulously because it's so important.
Yeah.
Um, and even though it doesn't feel like the kind of government that we signed up to do to provide sort of public benefit for our public that we're representing, and it's sort of the the state overreach aspect of it made it a little bit unpleasant. I can't tell you how much I appreciate all of your efforts on that and and persistence and the staff. And I'm sorry that Dina left because I know that she worked incredibly hard on that and the staff was stretched so thin. Um, and I I really appreciate that. So thank you for allowing me the privilege to be mayor and to work so well with me. Um, that goes for staff and council members. And I'll just end with this, even though I won't be mayor, um, I would love to see us be now that we have the housing element in the past. Um, so think about sort of some really ambitious things. And uh, and let's not be afraid to be ambitious going forward um to the extent that we can. And I'll throw two crazy things out there. Um, one, um, you know, we are moving forward with purchasing the Richardson Bay sanitary ponds. Um, and that, you know, we're transferring money to another public agency. Theoretically, all public agencies should be for public good. And I know that when members of the public walk by that space, they say, you know, well, that's just a weird thing to have in the middle of our beautiful park. So um, I'm going to tell you the why we should do it, but I'm not gonna tell you how we do it. Um, you know, we should consider merging with the Richard St. Bay Sanitary District. So their assets are our assets and our assets are their assets. And then we can come up with a plan um with maximizing that space for public benefit. Right now, they're thinking about maximizing ratepayer benefit, but it's the public. And if we can combine our vision of public good, maybe that's something that would be interesting to the public to do. Um, and and it would actually even allow us to do more than just the ponds. Um, again, I'm not saying it's possible to do, but I think it would be super interesting if we could do it. And then the other thing would be, and it sort of dovetails with what Mr. Grifari said, is is really be aggressive about making this a better pedestrian-friendly and bike-safe town. Um, and one of the things I was thinking, I mentioned this to Greg and he kind of rolled his eyes as it being impossible, but was, you know, this, and it came up because the Caltrans project that um, he's he was online for, you know, they're talking about adding class four bike lanes um along Tiburon Boulevard, which have marginal utility, but that's new here, no there. But where it where I do hear a lot of complaints about where our bike infrastructure is not safe, that could be better, is downtown. So if we really wanted to spend money um and create and and make change, we could widen the side to run Boulevard going down towards the ferry to include, and we'd have to take some of the median and some of the landscaping and make it a much safer uh bike route. And I think we should, we should be thinking about projects like that that are very ambitious. But they won't get done if we don't think about it. So um, that's my my request to you going forward is um that we that we think ambitiously. Um, so with that, um, we we are moving to electing a new mayor and um. Oh, sorry. Yeah. So at this point, I'd like to open this up for public comment. Is there anyone in the in the chambers who'd like to make a comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, anybody online?
Seeing none.
Okay, I'll close po- cover up public comment period. I guess technically I have to bring it back to um the council for discussion.
Well, your your comments have caused me to want to say a couple of things. One, one is I think that the housing element should be from now on known as Jack's Housing Plan. I think that would be a lovely honor.
Oh, yeah.
Um, but also I just want to say, I think uh you, something you said early in your comments about how the mayor doesn't have any special additional power, but is the role is that of the convener, the runner of meetings and the kind of setting of the agenda. And I think um, you did a lovely job of that this year, and I felt like everyone in these meetings felt heard. Um, sometimes it was difficult to make that happen, but I think you did a a fine job. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Vice Mayor Fredericks.
Yes, I I was going to start my comments.
I was going to start my comments by expressing my admiration uh for your penchant to use an economy of words, but I think you blew that. However, I've always admired your connection to the community members and to their priorities and your graciousness. I think that is so important in a small town. We're really not a political entity until the state makes us one. And uh, keeping that community is so important, and I thought you did a great job of that.
Thank you. That's very nice of you to say. Oh, Councilwoman Fredericks?
Yeah, I wanted to say something. Um, you made me laugh so hard with your uh taking credit for the ending the pandemic, of course. Um, you know, I think that you probably had some of the toughest meetings that we've ever seen uh on the town council. And the way that you uh managed the meeting and helped people feel heard and also brought the council to a decision was very admirable. And I think you also, with a lot of the housing issues, struggled internally. And you explained at the la- I think it was the last meeting uh when you really explained to everyone uh how you saw it. Um, I thought that was really good, and I thought that instilled a lot of confidence in the public, whether they agreed with you or not. Um, it showed that you were really thinking about the issues and trying really hard. So um, I want to thank you for getting us uh through all of the meetings with that kind of grace and allowing the public to be heard.
Thank you. That's very nice of you to say.
Uh, yeah, I think I'd like to echo uh the council members' comments. You know, I'm newer to this process, but I I would say that especially that housing element meeting was incredibly uh difficult. And I thought the way that you ran it was um, you know, again, incredibly fair and and making sure that everyone was heard. And I would say you know, even even for smaller issues or non-issues where it's just public comment at the beginning of the meeting. I think the way that you you've dealt with the public, I think, makes them feel heard, which is what a what a mayor should do, I think, in this position. So I appreciate uh, you know, everything you've done and uh and and being a great example of a of a mayor. So thank you.
Thank you. That's very nice. Appreciate it. Um, at this point, it would be my honor to make a motion that we um appoint Vice Mayor Fredericks as the new mayor of Tiburon.
Second.
Um, all in favor of approving that motion? Say aye.
Aye.
No opposed?
Thank you.
Um, and with that, I'm going to turn the mayor over to the mayor-elect.
Thank you very much. Um, I suppose I should just say a few words about my priorities. They mostly um echo Jack's. Um, bike ped safety is really important. Another important aspect that I'd like to promote is the use of and the availability of public transit. I think that overlaps so many important issues on a more global level. And another thing I would like us to pay attention to is community building at the neighborhood level. I think a lot of our homeowners associations where we got a lot of our feedback uh have remained active, but many of them sort of went into hiatus during COVID and are are, you know, generating um excitement and and energy again. And one of the ways to do that, and I certainly think we've all heard about it, is figuring out um a modest program of of community events. I think uh the DITF uh will be one way that we can reach out and do that and remind people that everything works when you volunteer to help.
Nice.
And so I really have a list here of all the issues that that we dealt with under your leadership. Um, and they range from distribution of previously allocated funds to uh TPL for the acquisition of the Martha. That's still a hanging issue. Uh, we're still uh plotting through the planning uh for middle mile optic fiber infrastructure uh and scaring up providers that can give our people better service. Um, the BONs will be another exciting acquisition um as we go forward. And also, uh, I hope with your input, we'll continue to make very wise financial uh policies and decisions. Yeah, thank you. All right, uh, we move now to uh election of the vice mayor. Uh, would anyone like to make comments? If not, let me make um a few comments. I think it's really important uh that we reset the traditional succession to avoid pop politicizing mayor and vice mayor positions, which really in our town are honorary. The vice mayor position, like the mayor, is mostly honorific. Uh, it's an important learning position. The obligations are potentially to run town council meetings when the mayor is absent, which I almost never am. And to be present at two or three finance or or town manager evaluation uh committee meetings a year. I um would like to attest to the fact that it really is not an increased load of work and that the decision of who we nominate should balance the benefits of getting back on track to traditional rotation. The major one being minimizing politicizing two honorary positions in our small community. And with that, I would like to hear any comments or entertain a motion.
If I may, we should also open up for public comment at some point.
I'm so sorry. Would the public like to make a comment?
Yes.
Grab the mic.
Um, I'm not new to the town. I've been here almost ten years. Um, but I've never been to a town meeting mainly because I don't ever know when they are. I haven't, they're not um I I don't see them like advertised. Um, the reason that I'm here tonight is because one of my neighbors asked me to come and they're not here. But, but I wanted to make sure that I made my presence um known, just simply because I feel it is important for us as a community to come together and just talk about issues that we might have or um you know, um, how things could be improved in our beautiful city. I mean, it's gorgeous here and I love it so much and I have children. I always get emotional. I have children and I left, but I um. The city that I lived in prior was also a beautiful city. I lived in Alameda, California. And um, I lived there for fourteen years and pri- prior to that, um, I was homeless. I was in an abusive relationship and I left with my um unborn child. And I was homeless for like uh a year. And then I was able to get housing in Alameda. Um, which is very important. People are not um. How can I say this? People are not um always. I'm so sorry. I'm emotional. I'm so emotional because this means so much to me. Um. You know, we want to all give our children the best of everything and things we didn't have. And um. I always wanted just to have my children to be safe and in a in a in a healthy in in a healthy environment. And that was um one of the reasons that I was so grateful to be able to live in Tiburon because um it is a beautiful place. It's it is safe. I I don't mean to talk too long, but um I just wanted to say how much I appreciate this town and how much I love this town, and I'm so happy to be a part of this meeting. And hopefully you guys will make it more um publicized to us. So we'll know when it's here. So we'll be here for it because I will all show up. And thank you.
So may I suggest that you email me and we'll have a chat?
Okay, thank you so much.
My pleasure.
I'm sorry. I didn't introduce myself. My name is Tammy Harris Jackson and um my children um are uh uh um are a a a very um strong part of this community as well. And I want to see them grow and one day be a part of the board. So thank you again, and I shall. Have a beautiful evening. Happy holidays.
Thank you for coming. Thank you. Is there any further public comment in the room? I'm seeing none. Anything online?
Seeing none.
See, I caught on. All right, I'll bring it back to council for um any comments or a motion.
I have a motion. I would like to move to nominate uh Holly uh for vice mayor.
I'll second that.
Um, I would like to make a substitute motion to nominate Isaac McFar. He occupies the seat that normally rotates to vice mayor, and I think it's pretty important to step back into the traditional rotation. Is there a second? I'm hearing none. So we reinstate the original motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Would you like to make any comments, Holly?
Uh, sure. Uh, I just want to thank my colleagues uh for nominating me for vice mayor. Um, I uh am very excited uh to do this role. And um, I would just say uh thank you for that unanimous votes.
All right, we move now to um action item five. Town Council Ad hoc Committee Appointments. We are going to appoint the Town Manager Performance Evaluation Committee Ad hoc Committee and the twenty twenty four Budget Finance Committee. Is there a staff report?
I think you said most of it, but I'll just briefly comment. The reason this is coming up tonight is because these are ad hocks that are traditionally made up of the mayor and vice mayor. And now that you have all switched for the year twenty twenty four, it's coming before you tonight. And I'll just comment that the performance evaluation ad hoc will sunset upon completion of the performance evaluation and the finance committee will sunset upon adoption of the budget.
Okay, any comments from the public? I'm seeing none. Any comments from the council?
I just think we should have the mayor and the vice mayor be both the budget committee and the town manager performance review committee, but.
I agree with that.
I agree. All right, will someone make a motion, please?
I will move that we create those two subcommittees with the mayor and the vice mayor as the members.
And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
And we move now to a discussion item Tiburon Boulevard Traffic Study.
Yes, thank you, uh, Madam Mayor. And this is a just a discussion item. There was no staff report associated with this item. How I did, however, provide a one-page handout, which I believe I left a copy at each council member's seat.
Yeah, I did have one somewhere. Who who wrote this was my question. Sorry.
Who wrote these?
Yeah, is that is that staff? You wrote it?
Uh, between myself and public staff. Yeah, yeah, it was just. Yeah, so just a a reminder, um. I don't have the exact date, but sometime in twenty twenty two, council discussed allocating money from American Rescue Plan Funds for a variety of purposes. One of the earmarks uh that council um agreed upon at that meeting was a hundred thousand dollars for a traffic study regarding Tiburon Boulevard. Um, and I believe at a recent meeting, Councilmember Welner requested this item come back for discussion. Um. Very briefly, uh, what staff would propose to do is we would issue an RFP or request for proposal um to qualified consulting firms to assist us in this. And the sheet in front of you is simply sort of bulleted scope scopes of work that we're thinking makes sense. Uh, there was there was very little discussion at the meeting on exactly what we'd be looking at. Uh, but this is sort of our first draft of what the scope of work would look like for that RFP, and we're really just looking for feedback from council um on if this is the right approach, or if there's something else council was thinking. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So is it?
I can I can summarize if you'd like while you're reading. Um, it it really breaks down into two categories. Uh, I think everybody agrees that well, I don't know if everybody agrees, but everybody recognizes that perhaps one of the uh weak links in Tiburon Boulevard is the traffic signal. Um, yeah, traffic signals and their optimization or their or their level of synchronization. Um, so one of the things that we don't believe has ever been looked at that closely is that element of traffic signal optimization, particularly given that there's a lot of new technology out there. Uh, it's called adaptive uh traffic signal technology that potentially would provide benefits. The second part is sort of the physical layout of the road, which has been studied many, many times over the past thirty or forty years. But that's not to say there hasn't there isn't some idea out there that's reasonable um that may provide some benefit. So essentially, two buckets we're looking at. One is the traffic signal and the technology around that. And the second would be sort of the physical aspect of the road and geometry, striping, turnpocket length, that sort of thing. All of that requires a fairly thorough traffic count uh up-to-date traffic count to be done for anybody to make any sense of the data, so.
So so I do have a question. Um, there was some talk early on that in one of the projects, maybe the paving project that Caltrans was going to perform, that it was an opportunity to lay cables so that traffic signals could be synchronized centrally. Where did that idea go?
Well, that's that idea is sort of part in parcel of this uh in many ways. Um, so to provide a little more background. Um, at that same meeting, I believe, where you earmarked money for the traffic study, you also earmarked money for design um completing a biddable set of plans and specifications for fiber optic cable that runs down Tiburon Boulevard. That work is ongoing. We're in the process of working with Caltrans to finish that. We are including in that work um if it were to be constructed conduit that runs to every single traffic control cabinet that exists uh on the Tiburon Boulevard. So we don't quite know how those how these two ideas match up. Um, but but that idea of laying fiber optic cable is still active, and we certainly are thinking about the proximity of the traffic signals for routing that conduit.
Well, the reason I asked is it seems to me if we're going to end up um with cable that can um monitor what the traffic is in order to synchronize the traffic signals. Um, that would be a good source of data for studying traffic on Tiburon Boulevard.
Uh, it certainly would make it easier if that technology was out there today. Sure, we could be sort of actively monitoring and counting all the time.
I I'm I'm sorry. I thought the technology is available. We just don't have it here in Tiburon.
Uh, that's more accurate.
Um, but we might. It's still not definite that it's part of the ongoing Caltrans um Highway one thirty one project. Is that what you're saying?
The Caltrans portion of that project does not include any significant work on the traffic signals.
Really? Okay, at one time, um, I thought it did.
I actually had a question.
Yes.
Um, with respect to this um RFP, um, so part of what I don't understand is I thought that it was that Caltrans was going to redo the lights as part of the work.
It's not my understanding.
We were trying to get them to redo the lights.
We've we've talked to them several times about coordinating our projects and we've pointed out to them that we believe having physical conduit connecting each traffic signal would be an advantage, you know, moving forward. Um, they agree, but it's it is not part of their future one thirty one project.
Okay, and then my next question is, I think it kind of dovetails on someone else uh said this, but if we're gonna do a study of timing and traffic count data, um, I would really like us to do a wider RFP and really look at traffic on Tiburon Boulevard. And and tie it in to the JPA, the Yellow Bus JPA, and figure out you know, with with how how can we um, you know, mitigate traffic and what are the times at which you know, we're seeing the most um traffic? I know that you're thinking about this as a as a data collection in terms of the timing is what I think this project is, the RFP would be, but I'm asking if we can make it broader so that we could get more data, because I don't believe that incremental costs will be that high. Because the the people that do the the traffic counts can also do the modeling that we need for the JPA and for the town council to come up with ideas on how we mitigate traffic on Tiburon Boulevard. We can look at peak times um where we're seeing the most amount of traffic. Is it, you know, between uh Bel Air and Del and uh Del Mar? Is it between um, you know, Reed or, you know, Black uh the Cove Shopping Center and and Bel Air, you know, that that is something I I would love for us to see um so that we can then come up with strategies in order to mitigate traffic either as part of the town council or as part of the Yellow Bus JPA. Because one of our residents' major complaints is traffic along Tiburon Boulevard. And this would be a great way to probably add in that uh add in that uh work so that we can get that data, but not have to do two RFPs.
Oh, sure. No, and I think, yeah, I mean, I think we're in many ways, we're saying the same thing. I'd be happy to work with you offline on language that you think would get the information, but this is the opportunity that and again, this is our first draft of it. We're happy to, and this is one of the questions. We're happy to come back with a full-blown RFP for you all to approve and then release if you'd like. That way it's not just out there and um we're happy to do that.
I think that would be great because this is more of a summary. It's a good summary. Um, but maybe if we could broaden it and get our data.
Yeah, well, I mean, we anticipate uh and I think we can we can emphasize that we want a robust uh traffic count, you know, data collection um phase of this, because that really is the information that gets used for everything, right, is that baseline traffic count data um that's thorough, like you know, just as you said, peak times where they're turning, when they're turning on those turns. Um. So we're happy to, you know, turn this into a much more narrative RFP and bring it back to council for approval. Uh, I would either January or February would be my guess, so.
So are we in the comments or are we still in?
Asking questions.
This is where in the questions part.
So so I I have one more question. Um. Is TAM a resource at all for um this kind of data? Transportation Authority of Marin.
There may be, you know, there there may be existing data that's been collected um at certain locations that that any consultant would be able to access through TAM. We have been in communications with TAM on this idea of a traffic study, um, you know, trying to get some suggestions from them on language we would use to make sure we're getting the information that we want. Um, but certainly any information that TAM has available, you know, that's public information could be utilized by any consultant.
All right. And so the next step on this uh after this discussion is to come back to council with a proposed RFP?
Yeah, I just wanted really to check with you all because there was no detail when we talked about this at the earmarking discussion back in twenty two. It was just do a traffic study, you know, or or put the money aside for traffic uh analysis. I just wanted to make sure we're not totally off base, that that this is what you all envisioned um in terms of the information that would be collected and the questions that we would want answered.
Okay, so I guess I'm still not perfectly clear on what the data is going to be used for.
So in in our mind, we do a thorough data collection with traffic counts and using that that a consultants who are, you know, in this field would would assume they could make recommendations
For projects.
In two biggest and projects in two biggest areas. One is, are there physical improvements that can be done on Tiburon Boulevard, for instance, at an intersection that would improve traffic flow? And and those could be lengthening the turn pockets as one example. Um.
I have a couple.
Then the second question would be sort of technologically, is there a way we can optimize the traffic signal system? Um, utilizing technology that may not be out there now, but is available. Um, and what would that cost? More rough roughly, what would that cost?
How does the timeline for this line up with any Caltrans projects that are going to start? Because I ideally you would, this would be an output that we're handing or collaborating in some way with Caltrans with prior to to them repaving and marking and making making any any changes or leaving things the way they are on Tiburon Boulevard. Um, a a second question, which is will we look at the impact of the crossing uh the the other options, I guess, for Stewart Drive and, you know, potentially for Gil Martin if if we decide we want to add that to this in terms of scope? Putting a crosswalk at Gil Martin. Um, because it'd be great to understand, like, does does the on-demand nature of the crosswalk at Stewart make things less efficient, or would a full traffic light at Stewart make things more efficient for for traffic flow? And I guess the same thing, same, I would have the same question for Gil Martin, which is would an on-demand crosswalk system disrupt traffic to the degree that, you know, it could be could, you know, create some sort of significant impact if we have, you know, ten people spaced out thirty seconds to a minute apart that are coming up and hitting hitting the button, right? Um, it that can that can significantly delay things um even on a on a nice straightaway like that. Would it be would it be more efficient to have a full traffic light there? I think that's that's something that I'm I'm curious about. Um. And then and then I think the third piece is when we're thinking about traffic lights, I I'd done some reading about um um adaptive technologies and timing lights, and that there was a maximum distance between lights um where it was something like a thousand feet or something. It might have been less than that, but you had to have, there was some sort of maximum distance between lights in order to time them.
Again, that's why we hire.
It'd be great to understand. Yeah.
That's why we hired the the folks uh, you know, who are in this business to let us know. Again, that's an evolving field. Um. I I think that your points are great. I've taken some notes on beefing up, you know, steering them. I like the idea of looking at intersections that have crosswalks and saying is there any advantage to making it more controlled as opposed to random, you know, which it is now um for the most part? Um, it's a reasonable thing to ask. I we can certainly beef that section up and, you know, sort of dig a little deeper in there in their RFP. And again, I think it sounds like you all want to see this before it goes out, so we're happy to bring back sort of the fully, you know, baked narrative, the eight-page thing, whatever it's going to look like, and have you um approve it before we release it.
But it's so.
Oh, but I'm sorry. I didn't actually answer your first question, Councilmember Nick Far, which is timing. So our understanding is that at the very earliest the Caltrans construction of their project would start late twenty twenty five or maybe even twenty twenty six. So there's thi- this work is a matter of months, I believe, as opposed to, you know, years. So I think it the timing works out pretty well. Um, in terms of certainly having some information prior to finalize the Caltrans finalizing their project, but.
So so I just want to make a comment, having uh realized that the Caltrans project started as a paving project that was supposed to have as a paving project that was supposed to have started this year. And because of all these bright ideas, it's now been postponed, uh, because it had to go back to design um, till, uh, twenty twenty-six. I hope the consultant will be able to give us some information on what affects uh, the recommendations he makes will have on the timing of the Caltrans decisions, engineering, planning, construction.
Uh, I I remember one more question, which was, um, if the Caltrans project has the additions of bike lanes in it, right, class four bike lanes or whatever, whatever level they have. The implication is that the lanes are gonna get smaller or the meridian's gonna get smaller, right? There's only so much space between one side of the street and the other. Um, uh, it would also be great to understand what the impact is of adding bikes to roadways in general, whether it's one side or the other, if there are recommendations on on that for in terms of of keeping track of flow, traffic flow, how you divide, um, you know, a class four bike lane or whatever class bike lane they end up with and the road. Um, you know, again, to to make sure that we, or or whether it's it's not recommended at all to have uh, bike lanes on a on a roadway that is forty to forty-five miles per hour.
So what I'm hearing is sort of asking the consultant to more or less look at the Caltrans plans, at least as they are now, and and weigh in on certain aspects of it, you know, and yep, that seems like a reasonable thing to do.
Yeah, and and just give us a little more feel, uh, for the Caltrans process. Because it's very convoluted from our point of view, for those of us who don't deal with them often. Holly, did you want to say something?
Well, I just, I I I have a lot of comments to make. I don't have questions, so I'm just waiting while all these questions that are really comments are done, so that we can have public hearing.
I think we're at comments, you should ask your, say your comments.
Well, should we do the public?
Yes, we have someone here in the room who would like to comment. Talk it, talk into the mics so we can all hear you.
So would that include, um, streetlights? Like, um, the street lamps to make the light, make the rope brighter? Because, um, we walk at night sometimes and it's so dark and scary. And sometimes like I might have to send one of my sons to the store or something and it the traffic is going and there's no streetlights or anything to see really well. And it's it's pretty scary. So I was just wondering if that would be something that would be inclusive to the, um, road construction, um, the safety.
I, that's a great question, um, I I don't, I I don't think Caltrans is looking at streetlights.
I I, you know, Cal, the Tiburon Boulevard is a state highway. So, yeah, we cough up exceptions once in a while, but it's something to look at and ask about.
Yes, real dark. And then even with the deer running out when you're drunk, it's like really, like you see them at the last minute because it's so dark.
Thank you. All right, any more comments?
Comments, yeah, I've, um, so, uh, first I want to say, uh, I was delighted to see this on the agenda. Thank you so much, uh, former mayor and, uh, uh, town manager for putting it on. Um, the reason I've been so eager to first earmark some not quite earmark, but designate some funding from the federal funds for this study and talk about it tonight. Um, is because of all the things that come up periodically from constituents in Tiburon. I think the cadence, the one thing that we always hear is that traffic is bad on Tiburon Boulevard and getting worse. And that also came up a lot in the context of the housing element discussions, right? Because how can we put so many additional units at the end of Tiburon Boulevard when uh, it's so congested as it is? So I think this is, uh, great. I'm delighted to see that, uh, uh, to request that staff, uh, create a more um, fulsome RFP for us to review. Uh, I like the bullet points that are here. I would say that there are three things that I think are perhaps missing that could be added. And it's all in the, it's all in the desire to make this not a routine traffic study in the sense of, um, you know, as some kind of short-term improvement. But really, the way I'm looking at this, if it can be, is this is our chance to to try and fix the traffic issue in Tiburon. This is kind of a big effort. I don't think it's, um, necessarily a, uh, it hopefully it's less than a year, but I don't think it's necessarily a three-month effort in the sense that I think that in addition to looking at the kind of classic physical tube that is the freeway that goes from one end to the other and and figuring out what the traffic counts are and how to ease the movement of cars. I think we should add a a real analysis of public transportation that which includes the yellow bus and anything else. Uh, you know, any other sources of public transportation and identify what sources of transportation, public transportation could ease traffic on Tiburon Boulevard. And that, I think that goes hand in hand with the traditional kind of analysis of cars moving up and down the road. Um, I also think we need to be very careful to make sure that it includes what we're expecting to see over the next ten years. So that includes the housing, the new housing element, uh, which is gonna make traffic worse, not better. So we have to not imagine that we're in a static situation, but we're in one with growing, uh, growing demand. Uh, and it also, I I thought it was a really great, Isaac, to mention the the Caltrans bike lanes as something that is being planned, that might make things worse, not better in terms of traffic. Maybe it makes it better, I don't know, but that analysis should be made. And then finally, we periodically get and and try to respond to individual safety requests like the Gil Martin, um, request tonight. And I think, um, part of the issue here is not only looking at what safety improvements would have, you know, whether they're gonna happen and and whether or not they're gonna impact traffic positively or negatively, but basically all crosswalks. And, you know, what their impact is on traffic on Tiburon Boulevard and how to make sure that they're located and timed in the in the optimal way. So, uh, my overall advice about this is to think big and to think conceptually and to try and make this, because we're not gonna do this again anytime soon. This is our chance to try and solve a big problem for people to run something that they know is bad and getting worse. And I'm really hopeful, I'm excited to see this and I'm hopeful that we can uh, remember to think big and and try and find a consultant who isn't um, who isn't doing the kind of thing that you get in in the EIR, which is just kind of the minimum traffic count, but is really thinking, how do we solve this problem?
Are there any more comments from the council? Does the staff, uh, desire any more direction or information?
We will always take more direction, but that was, uh, this has been very helpful, got a lot of good points to, um, integrate. And we look forward to bringing it back.
Were you gonna?
Yeah, I had one, one more comment. I think, um, one other thing that's kind of missing from this is, um, and and maybe I'm, I could be reading this wrong, but it seems like some of the implication around studying traffic data on, uh, Tiburon Boulevard is really just sort of one-on-one to downtown. I think it's also, and I think, I don't know if John or or if, uh, if, uh, Mayor Fredericks, um, made the comment around, you know, when we're thinking about the housing element, we're we're, we're planning on on, uh, growth off Paradise. So it'd be great to also understand how Paradise Drive contributes to traffic or, you know, how much traffic is 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 actually going up and down Paradise off of Tressel Glen, that sort of thing. Um, I don't know how feasible that is, but at least understanding that those sort of two ways that people come in and out of town, um, I think would be, would be helpful.
Yeah, it makes great sense, because when it, when Tiburon is jammed, everyone cuts over to Paradise.
Back way, yeah.
So, wow. Okay, well, you know, um, if it's any comfort at all, um, depending on what, uh, the housing project looks like, uh, we are constrained from requiring them, uh, to build onsite parking. The state's theory is that that will encourage the use of a public transit and discourage the use of cars.
As opposed to encouraging horrible illegal parking everywhere.
It's gonna be tough when there is no public transit available.
Well, you know, um, sometime in the next two years, uh, there's possibly gonna be a public transportation bond issue and, um, yeah, who knows? But I I agree, this is something we need to study and Paradise Drive should be part of it, even though chunks of it are actually in the county. Any more comments? I am seeing none, we move now to town council reports. Any reports? Well, I actually have two short reports. Uh, one is, you will be delighted to know that kicking around the back offices of the legislature is a new bill. Um, this bill, this bill, uh, will require or not require, will allow the state to decertify the housing element if the towns and jurisdictions have not built some percentage of, uh, the proposed housing by the next review cycle, which is in four years. And now that I've brought those smiles to your face, the second short report um, is that for many years I have actually sat on the North Bay uh, League of California Cities, now called CalCities, Transportation Communication Public Works Committee. It's it's a legislative advocacy committee. And the North Bay, uh, Division of the League of California Cities appoints any of you are eligible if you are interested. Um, you go up to Sacramento and hear from the legislators about what they're up to and help form, uh, statewide policies. That concludes my reports, any report from the town manager?
Just a reminder that, uh, this Sunday, December tenth is the, uh, there'll be a lot of holiday festival cheer going on downtown, um. Encourage everybody to attend, should be a good time.
Any more comments? Uh, we adjourn now to closed session.
And just make sure there's no co- uh, public comment for the closed session items.
Is there any public comment on the closed session item? I'm seeing none, any online?
Seeing none.
Thank you. Where are we going upstairs?
We can go down here, up here, wherever, pretty much. Up there, very much so.
You
Are we ready? The council met in closed session. Is there anything to report?
No, the council met in closed session and took no reportable actions.
Are there any comments? We are adjourned. Thank you everyone.